We'll call this meeting to order at the City Council, that's March 5th. If you'd like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. Good to see you all here tonight. Need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Councilmember Welling is excused, but everyone else is present and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there any changes to that agenda before we consider anything else? I assume there isn't, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's been prepared.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynn?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the council minutes for February 20th. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go on to the bills. We have a warrant register with today's date on it. Questions, comments, concerns? Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perkins?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion? Discussion? If no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Takes care of the bills. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what's on your mind tonight, sir?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Tell Brady Roberts congratulations on winning state and wish our boys good luck this weekend. Boys basketball team's headed to state. First time, I think, in four or five years.
Excellent.
Plus or minus COVID years.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
That's cool.
See what happens.
Yep, exactly right.
Oh, and once again, thank Gordon's crew for making it so I could drive up and down my street.
Oops. I have nothing. Sellers?
Just want to remember, remind everybody of the numbers for suicide outlines to help people when they're struggling. And also, if you know people that are having trouble with insurance, or housing, or other things, Wyoming 211 is a great resource.
I'd like to welcome in Women's History Month with a thank you to all the courageous women whose shoulders I stand upon. Wyoming, the equality state, was the first state to grant women the right to vote in 1869. I sit as one woman of seven on an elected council that represents our city, but by gender populace, it should be four to seven. Sexism, misogyny, and gender discrimination is something every woman faces throughout their lifetime. But every year, every courageous act puts another crack in the patriarchal glass ceiling, weakening it for future generations. To the ladies.
Thank you. I also would like to make a little statement here tonight. You've probably noticed, or some people have probably noticed, some activity and changes going on down by the Roundhouse. And I've had this, so if you'll bear with me just a minute. The metal building located in the interior portion of Section 4 of the Roundhouse has been successfully removed. This removal was necessary as the city has some exciting economic development projects planned for this spring and summer on the rail yard campus. Initially, it was proposed that the building be removed as part of the Brownfields remediation process. Moreover, the building was not identified as part of Myers Anderson's original rail yard master plan. The city thoroughly assessed the site and the building and hired Commonwealth Heritage Group to conduct a historic evaluation. This investigation was conducted under the city's authority and was related to the YDOT TAP grant Section 106 process. After several discussions with YDOT, Chippewa, and our local HPC, it was decided that the building would be excluded from the scope of work related to the TAP grant provided by YDOT. Shades of Pale Brewing will now occupy the fourth section of the Roundhouse facility. However, the only operable swinging doors in front of the ironworker's shop have left our contractors with no reasonable means to access the interior of the building with their materials and equipment. Therefore, the disassembly of what we call the ironworker's shop was necessary for access and public safety. City staff cleared the disassembly of the ironwork shop. The removal did not utilize TAP grant nor other grant funds. It was accomplished through city general funds. Regardless of what rumors have been thrown around, the city took every required step for the removal, and it was accomplished fairly and diligently. The Roundhouse is no longer a reclamation plant, but a community gathering place. The city is committed to memorializing and interpreting our city's history while building and creating a space for citizens to enjoy. So I'll leave it at that, and we will move on to public hearings and special orders. We do have an appointment to consider. I'd like to bring forth the name of Sadie Fain to be reappointed to the Lodging Tax Board to a three-year term to end January 2027. If somebody would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you, and I appreciate Sadie for her service there. We will go on to a public hearing regarding sale of real property to Peak Ventures LLC. Mr. Harris, will you take us away with that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This matter involves a public hearing regarding a proposed sale of City of Evanston property to Peak Ventures LLC pursuant to Wyoming Statute 15-1-112BID. The purpose of the matter before the council this evening is to consider public input regarding the proposed sale of Lot 3, Block 1 of the Union Center 3rd Edition. It is proposed that Peak enter a development agreement which calls for the construction of buildings by Peak Ventures LLC of up to 50,000 square feet, which will be used for the manufacturing, distribution, and initially office space for specialized parts for on- and off-road vehicles. The appraised value of the real property is $420,000. The purchase price for the real property is $327,559.67 with interest at 8.5%. The hearing is to provide information so the governing body can determine whether the use of the property as proposed by Peak will benefit the economic development of the municipality pursuant to the statute that I mentioned. I will submit for the record to the clerk a notice of public hearing regarding sale of property, which was published once a week for three consecutive weeks in the U N County Herald, stating the purpose of and date and time of the hearing. The Community Development Director, Mr. Rocco O'Neil, will present information regarding the proposal, and Mr. Paul Cox and Ms. Emmy Cox will present information to the council regarding the proposal. Mr. O'Neil and Ms. Cox will also address questions from the council regarding the proposal. After the presentation, any interested member of the public may provide input to the council regarding the proposed sale. Once all public input has been taken, the hearing on the matter will be concluded, and at a latter point in the agenda, a resolution will be considered regarding the proposed sale. Mr. O'Neil, would you like to address the council, sir?
Mayor, members of the council, Rocco O'Neil, City of Evanston, Community Development Department. I'm excited to be here today to present to you Apex. I'm joined by Paul and Emmy, so I'm going to try to be brief and just give you an overview and let them tell you a little bit about their business. If you refer to the screen here, you can see Lot 3 of Block 1 of the Union Center 3rd Edition. It's a site the city partnered with the Business Council to develop about two years ago to prepare for a manufacturing facility. Again, just to give you a little bit of perspective, in the park there is Clean Energy Corporation, Mitsubishi Chemical, and then kind of our remaining three lots in the park. This is the 4.1 acre site up on top next to Clean Energy. And now I'll turn it over to Paul and Emmy to tell you a little bit about their company.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Is it evening or afternoon? Hi. I'm Emmy and this is Paul, obviously. We'd like to first start off with Y Peak Ventures, because you're seeing a different company room up here. It's Apex. So we establish Peak Ventures as the entity in Wyoming that will be purchasing the property and developing it, and Apex will be our tenant, which is still our company. And Paul founded this company in 2019.
Yep. And so a brief history of how we started and why. So Emmy's an entrepreneur, I'm a design engineer. And so, you know, I've worked for some large companies in design engineering. And she convinced me, it's like, well, why don't you just do your own thing? Well, that's kind of how this started. For better or for worse, sometimes, I wonder. But so I started, so where a lot of this type of technology and history comes from. So I was, for 10 years, I was in charge of product design for Fox, which I think a lot of people have heard of in the off-road industry. And prior to that, I did hydrostatic transaxles. So, and I think now we're probably around 50 patents or so specific to the industry. So we've done pretty good, and we're building a business, and it's new. And it's based on newer technology. So most of our products have patents to support it. Otherwise, you know, it gets copied and you lose your investments. So we've been doing this for about three years, four years, and it's going quite well, to the point where we need to expand. We expect to expand, you know, at a rapid pace, doubling about every year, which is about the maximum amount we want to grow without having too much stress on the system. So we need room. And where do we, you know, where do we want to work? What type of people do we want to hire? I grew up in a small town, not too dissimilar from this one, in Indiana. And so I like, I prefer the work ethic, you know, less busy, less crazy. And I just think in general, it's a good place to, you know, for families and to work. And so we really do want to be a part of the, you know, the culture, you know, what's going on here, and try to integrate as well as we can. And so with that, we're going to grow, and we have a stage plan for how we want to build out the land. We're going to start with one building.
I think that's it.
Okay. And so we're going to start with, we would like to start with a building that would ultimately be turned into primarily office space. And then a second building, which would be, you know, warehousing, some light manufacturing. And then, thirdly, more, you know, machine shop, light welding. And that should do it. And let me see, here we go. Yeah. And just to give an idea of the type of buildings we'd like to do, something a bit rustic. And we talked also kind of coordinating with the Roundhouse kind of look. Because we'd like to have a pretty place to work at as well. So, and then again, 1, 2, 3, and how that would lay out in the timeframe depends on how fast we expand, you know, or grow. And right now, I'm thinking of building a year. That would probably be ideal.
And then if, about the owners of the company. Obviously, we're the owners of the company. We live in Camas right now, and we both have considerable experience in leadership positions in different companies. So Paul has served, as he told you, the head of design for multiple companies. He was a technical co-founder of Falcon Shocks prior to establishing Apex. So he is the creative and strategic lead for Apex. I bring business development expertise, and I am the co-founder of a company that's based in multiple states, and it's 15 years old. And so I helped Paul establish this business, and I serve as the business manager for Apex right now. Want to go to Y Evanston?
Yeah, and I kind of skipped a bunch of steps when I was talking earlier. But yeah, Y Evanston for the, you know, previously mentioned. We like the small town, smaller town. And it kind of fit. And by the way, we looked all over. We looked Montrose, Grand Junction, Idaho. And those were the states we kind of narrowed it down to, obviously. And then we've been coming up here quite a bit, you know, through the years, and then ended up landing on Evanston. So here we are.
Excellent. Any other questions for Mr. Cox or Scott? I don't believe I do. Anybody else got questions? I'm just thrilled you're here. This is an exciting prospect for us, as well as you. We hope it's wildly successful for you guys. And if it will, if it is, then it is for us as well. So we're glad you're here. So I have no questions. I just, I'm thrilled you're here.
Your buildings look like barn dominiums. Are they barn dominiums?
They have that look, but inside it'll be manufacturing and office space.
Lovely. Love manufacturing.
Thank you. I think Mr. O'Neil may have some more information.
Yeah, just some numbers to close it out. And obviously, this is a sale under economic development, so we need to be able to justify that sale. And so we use RIM's data to estimate economic impact. And RIM's data is provided by the Department of Economic Analysis. And you purchase data packs based on a five-county region. And so it gives you really specific data based on the NAICS code and the industry that you're looking to recruit into the area. So we did a two- and 10-year estimated economic impact based on those RIM's data multipliers. And obviously, information that they provided in their business plan and the books. So two-year output, we're looking at direct impact of 2.3 million, indirect 3 million, for a total output of 5.3 million. Employment, direct 15, indirect 60. This is why we like manufacturing, the auxiliary jobs that come with direct manufacturing jobs, for a total economic impact in year two of '75. And then employee compensation and local taxes. And I won't get too into detail there, but it does meet our base requirements for sale under economic development. And then the exciting part, when you talk about manufacturing and expansion, is the 10-year estimate. And so you can see here, output at the 10-year mark, based on their projected growth and their business plan and our RIM's multipliers. You're looking at a total output of 54.8 million, so 55 million, in a five-county region, most of that being U N County. Employment, direct 120, indirect 627 jobs in a five-county region is what the RIM's data is telling us. So a total regional employment impact of 747 jobs in 10 years. And then obviously, the taxes, improving and widening the tax base is what economic development's all about. And so 20, just under 22 million in total tax base expansion in the 10-year period. So that's the data, and that's all I have for you.
I like all the big numbers and all the data and all that stuff. I mean, I know we need to use it, but we're taking an empty lot, and we're going to put some business on there. I think that's fantastic.
That boils it down.
It boils right down to that. Absolutely right. Any other questions for Mr. O'Neil?
I have none.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Is there anyone else present who would like to provide input regarding this proposed sale? There being none, we will conclude this hearing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Our next one is another public hearing to solicit comment regarding a petition to expand a use control area for the Roundhouse and Rail Yard facility. I suspect you'll...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This matter involves a public hearing regarding the proposed expansion of the use control area for the Roundhouse and Rail Yard facility. The purpose of the matter before the council this evening is to consider public input regarding an expansion of a previously adopted use control area restriction for the Roundhouse and Rail Yard facility. It is proposed that use restrictions previously adopted by the city or a portion of the facility be extended to include 17.939 acres of property. The hearing is to provide information so the governing body can determine whether the use restriction should be extended to this additional acreage. I will submit for the record a petition seeking the expansion of the use control area, a public notice of the date and time of the hearing regarding the petition, which was published once a week for four consecutive weeks in the U N County Herald, commencing with its edition of January 24, 2024, and notices to adjacent property owners of the hearing and petition. The city engineer, Mr. Damon Newsom, will present information regarding the proposal and address questions from the council. After the presentation, any interested member of the public may provide input to the council regarding the proposed use area restriction expansion. Once all public input has been taken, the hearing on the matter will be concluded, and at a latter point in the agenda, a resolution will be considered regarding the proposal. Mr. Newsom, would you like to present some information to the council, please?
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Damon Newsom, City of Evanston engineer. The reason we're here is really an extension of a process that already exists. Back in 1997, the city began planning and restoration of the Roundhouse area. That led to several environmental assessments, studies of the ground. In 2006, a use control area was established that Mr. Harris talked about. That was basically an area about 5.44 acres, which is the current parking lots that we have in front of us. In 2008, the city formally entered what they would call a voluntary remediation plan with the DEQ to formalize it. What this request is, is to really encompass the whole property and make it a use control area that in essence has institutional controls to limit future expansion of any residential, nursing home, daycare, hospital, hospice uses, knowing that the soil does have contaminants. We have this control, in essence, to limit anything that would happen in there.
Have any questions for Mr. Newsom?
I do not.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom. Is there anyone else present who wishes to provide any comments to the council? There are none.
Mr. Mayor, the hearing on this matter will be concluded. Thank you, Mr. Newsom.
Thank you. Thank you. We have no consent agenda nor unfinished business, and so we'll move on to new business, and we'll start there with a motion regarding the bids for the Bear River Walkway renovation project. Ms. Larson?
Mayor, council, Kim Larson, Evanston Parks and Rec District Director. We put out an invitation to bid on a Bear River Walkway renovation. This was a section from Bear River Drive to the Sixth Street overpass. That section is asphalt. If you frequent the walkway, most of it's concrete. And we still have a couple sections that are asphalted over the time. The roots and the cracks have gotten to them. Well, we were hoping for a bid, but unfortunately, not unfortunately, we did get one bid from Maxfield Construction, which I've heard only great things about them, and was excited to work with them, but unfortunately, the bid was way over than what we have allotted. So I believe that this time, if it was a little bit over, I think we could make that work. But at this time, I would recommend rejecting this bid.
Okay. Do you want us to do a motion and then a negative vote, or just, how would you prefer us do that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the city council has to approve all public works capital projects for the recreation industry. So you will need to make a motion, and as Ms. Larson indicated, she's asking that you move to reject the bid. And they will plan accordingly with rebidding and reevaluating the project. So that's...
And I appreciate that, too. This is, we want this project to happen, but this bid, as I understand it, was nearly twice what we have budgeted allotted for, so...
Questions for Ms. Larson before we move on?
You answered my question. I was just wondering how much over we're looking, so...
So I'll make a motion to reject the bid?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to reject the bid and a second. Mr. Lynn making that motion. Mr. Lynch, seconding. And that motion is to reject. Reject this bid. Is any discussion on the motion?
Are you going to try and send it out for another bid?
Yeah, we'll try again.
Okay.
Thanks for being fiscally responsible for us.
No problem.
Thanks for watching out for the money.
We will try again.
Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor of the motion to reject the bid, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That bid is rejected. We'll go on to Resolution 2408. Mr. Harris, you'll read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2408, a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming approving a petition to expand a use control area for the Roundhouse and Rail Yard facility.
Thank you, sir. This is what Damon just explained to us. Is there anything additional we need to know before we move on this resolution at all?
No, nothing.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers with a motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Discussion?
I just wonder why they didn't do this originally and do the whole...
But that's just me. Glad we're doing it now.
Do we have any of that history at all, Mr. Harris?
Well, somebody in this room, other than the current mayor, was the mayor then.
So we got it right here.
My recollection is, when Mr. Newsom brought this information up, I recognized the signature. But my recollection was, is at the time, the area concentrated on the restricted use, as he mentioned, was those parking lots. And the area north of Section 4 was, I mean, the Roundhouse at that time had not been repurposed and refurbished. So that area north of there was not even a thought of being under construction or surface disturbance. So the original acreage, as he said, was five, and we're just encompassing that whole 17 acres and subject to those use restrictions for those four purposes that he mentioned. That's my recollection. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
From what I can tell on the map, this is going to encompass the new parking lot, I mean, that they're planning on putting in on that north side, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, that is correct.
Okay.
My goal with the whole area creation was to encompass everything. Try and make it a one-stop shop for all units.
Perfect.
Further discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2409, Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Resolution 2409, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, approving change order number one for the Roundhouse Section 4 Tenant, Gray, Shell, and Loading Facilities project in the City of Evanston.
Thank you. O'Neil?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Rocco O'Neil, Community Development Department. Excuse me. This is a change order that addresses the removal of the underground pits in Section 4 of the Roundhouse. There were some rail spurs and pits buried in there that we just weren't aware of, and we sort of uncovered those during the discovery process. And so this change order is to address those with the structural engineer and take out what we need to take out. As I mentioned in the email to you, we do have a deductive change order in the works. We're waiting on a few approvals for HVAC systems and so on. And that deductive change order should equal roughly 60,000. So the net change order here is about, after the deductive, about $9,210.
Okay. I guess there's really no way to know what might be uncovered as we start to peel back the lid on much of the history that has gone on there. It's going to be fascinating, I suspect, so... It's going to be fascinating, I suspect, so. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Ms. Lynn with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding the motion. Discussion?
Did you, did we discover these when we went to put like water lines and stuff like that in?
So we did some, some, some pits, test pits, pits for the seismic, to make sure that the material was structurally sound. The contractor wanted some reassurance, and during that process discovered that there were pits in every bay. And so obviously, when we're running underground utilities, plumbing and electrical and, excuse me, geez, those would be in our way. And so we just wanted to make sure that we removed what we needed to remove. And we're not, you know, we're not completely removing all the pits. We're just removing areas where underground utilities will run.
Further discussion?
If I remember right, I'm sorry. If I remember right, you put all that gravel stuff in there, not knowing what, if anything, had ever go into that Section 3 and 4. I saw at one time, I think we did know those pits were there, but it was cheaper just to fill them in and see what was going to go in there later.
I'm sure you probably like concrete over the top of it, but at the same time, you still need to run things underneath.
Yes. Ms. Hagman, did you have?
Yes, I just have one question. As you're, and this may or may not be possible, but as you're, in essence, destroying part of the pits, is there any way to chronicle, make a point of photographing for historical value? Because we are destroying history. It would be nice if we could to preserve that some way for the Roundhouse. I know we have the other ones, but every little one is different. They're all built by hand, and I don't know if you're going to uncover one whole one before you fill it in, but if it is culturally significant and historically significant, they are such a rare, rare thing for our nation's history.
Yeah. I don't know if I have a good answer for you on that. The contractor is aware that if he uncovers anything that, that is unknown and could be historically significant, he's to alert the architect and intern Shippel if it's, if it's necessary. And so as far as pictures, I don't know if I have a good answer for you. It's pretty well photographed, and we have a ton of videos, architectural drawings, photos, historical assessments, and so, does that, is that a good enough answer?
Yeah, it is. It is, we're, if the pits have been covered, there isn't that much of historical documentation on those particular ones. And so I've just come to find that sometimes every little brick is meaningful.
Yeah. Yep. Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved. Thanks, Rocko. Resolution 2410, Mr. Harris, you'll read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 2410, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a development agreement with Peak Ventures LLC, a Wyoming limited liability company. Peak, and determining that the sale of real property to Peak pursuant to the development agreement will benefit the economic development of the municipality as required by Wyoming statute, Section 15-1-112 BID.
This, again, is what we've discussed here with these fine folks that came. Is there any additional questions, or? I'm just, I'm just thrilled we're doing this. I think many people have expressed that. We're, again, we're thrilled to have you, and we're excited to see all this come to fruition for us and for you, hopefully so. I'll just entertain their introduction on this resolution.
I'll...
Go ahead. Go ahead, Michael.
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second.
Sellers with a motion. Mr. Perk, seconding. Discussion?
Thank you for the investment in Evanston. I think you guys will find that it is a great little small town.
Further discussion?
I'd just like to say, and it's been a long, without going off the deep end, but manufacturing in our country is, is so critical and so vital. It is my firm belief that by bringing back manufacturing and manufacturing here, we can uplift the entire country. It's what saved us every single time, American ingenuity. And by doing away with it in the 80s is where we are today. And so as a small manufacturer myself, I know how hard it is to manufacture in this country, because there's nothing here still. And so welcome, 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 and thank you.
Further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Departments, Mr. Newsom, do you have anything for us? We'll start over here on this side. Is there anything additional for us tonight?
I do not have anything.
Mr. O'Neill, do you have anything more? Do you have anything more for tonight's meeting?
Nothing.
All right, let me... Mr. Robinson, I don't want to miss anybody, so I'm trying to... Nothing? Chief, Vanish. Ms. Lynn? Ms. Larson?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris?
Your Honor, just some notification to the council. You're probably, some of you are probably aware, if not all of you, that an entity called West Soda LLC has filed an application for an industrial siting permit for a soda ash slip...
We'll get that on the record.
...mine and plant in Sweetwater County, Wyoming. This is very near Granger. The industrial siting permitting process is a process in, to itself, but does have some implication for county and city and town governments, which may be impacted by a facility of this size, or generally very large, very expensive type of facilities. For example, in the notice that was given to the city, they anticipate a peak employee working on this new mine of 1,287 in January of 2026. So with that, there could be some impact to the City of Evanston's facilities, such as police protection, fire and emergency services, and water, wastewater, and so forth, from those who may be living here...
Sure.
...as part of this workforce. And so in the, that the West Soda has identified the city as a potential impacted community, the DEQ reaches out, who oversees the industrial siting process, the DEQ reaches out to the city and asks if it wants to participate in developing an impact plan. Today, the clerk told me she was contacted by a representative, I think it was of the Sweetwater County government, and he notified her that, by phone, that there's a meeting next week to discuss whether or not there would be some impacts for the city. So potentially, you could see every community in UNA County and the county impacted by this project. So just to let you know that it's out there, Mr. Newsom has already looked at the information provided, they provided a flash drive when they sent the information out. And he, he already said, gave me some pages to look at. If we think there's a possibility that the City of Evanston could be impacted, it may be eligible for impact assistant payments, which are made out of sales and use taxes generated by the constructionist project, which could be significant. And there's a formula they use to, to make these payments. But it may be worth it to at least have a conversation with UNA County, Town of Bear River, Town of Lyman, and Town of Mountain View, as well as Sweetwater County, and the Town of Granger, and Rock Springs and Green River, to see where everything sits. These proceedings, I think the last one we had here was maybe for one of the wind farms?
I believe so. That makes sense.
But don't go into that. So we'll look at it and see if we believe that there's an impact, and then let you all know that we may notify them that we wish to participate. There are some deadlines that they set, set for that. But just to let you know that's going on.
Thank you. Thank you. Good information. Public participation. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council for any reason tonight? Please come forward, Mr. Horn.
My name is Shelley Horn, 31 Park Road, Evanston, Wyoming. For the record, I would like to make a correction to the mayor's comments concerning the removal of the metal building. If I heard you correctly, Mayor, you said that you had talked with Shippel, YDOT, and As vice chair of the Historico Preservation Commission, I have no awareness of anyone on the commission that was notified formally or informally of your intention to remove the metal building. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? We'll adjourn.